Good afternoon, everybody. It's Wednesday, March eighth, twenty twenty-three, six thirty P. M. And I'll call to order the Free Town Board Select Meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on our town's YouTube page. Tonight, I'm obviously, I'm joining the call remotely. I'm sick and I don't want to get anyone else sick. Tonight, we'll be going into executive session and then we will be returning back into open session. We will be going into executive session for the following two reasons. Master of Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One, Eight Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Public Employees Union, Local One One Four Four, Lyona, all bargaining units, the Free Town Police Association, and the Free Town Full-Time Firefighter Association, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of a public body that the chair so declares, and I do. And the second reason is Master General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section A, Section Twenty One A, to, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. So with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. We're now in executive session. We are now back from executive session. Sounds like we have some folks here for a specific agenda item, so I'm gonna try to, you know, save them some time and jump to those first. So I'm gonna kick it over to Selectmen Loops for Agenda Item Twenty-Six.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Matthews. Boards of Parks and Commission, Item Agenda Number Twenty-Six, Discussion of Vote on Letter of Support for the Open Space Plan requested by the Open Space Recreation Advisory Committee. As the board may remember, this is the second time, or this is the, the version that's been updated based on the comments and suggestions made by the board and the members as well as Serped. And this is just the updated version of that to go out to and get it approved by us and by the state. Am I correct on that? All right. I've reviewed the second, uh, second version and I love it. And it's something I know you folks have been working extremely hard on since you've been, since you began about a year and a half ago. So congrats to you on that accomplishment for having our first open space plan. So, congrats.
Yeah, great job. Thank you, guys.
Any comments, suggestions, or? Nope?
Nope.
All right. In that case, I entertain the motion to approve the open space plans requested by the Open Space and Recreation Advisory Committee.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Congrats.
I think it's fine.
Yeah, roll call?
Oh, sorry. Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. Okay.
We have to roll call.
Moving on, so... I mean, Carlos, if you want to just take care of the next two, just get them out of the way?
Yeah, I'll finish the next two and, um, just be done with the Boards of Parks. Item Agenda Twenty-Seven for tonight is Discussion of Vote on Whether to Approve the Support Earth Day Cleanup Project on four twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, with today's, this year's theme as Free Town, Keep It Clean, Keep It Green. I'm sorry, the other way. Keep It Green, Keep It Clean, which I love. And that was brought forth by our new building commissioner. And, um, and I'm glad that the Open Space Committee got involved and it's a, it's, it's a great, great idea. So, um, I, in the next one, Item Agenda Twenty-Eight, Stop and Shop also has a donation there, so that'll be the next one, but I think this is a-
I think, Carlos, sorry, I think we have to vote on to, um, to support Earth Day Cleanup Project.
Thank you. I know, I was just kind of putting, putting together and we'll bridge it out. So, um, I don't think we have any objections to this. I think this is a great idea, moving forward, the first annual cleanup day. So that's the case. I'd like to entertain the motion to approve Earth Day Cleanup Project on four twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Mixing it up.
And of course, Item Agenda Twenty-Eight, like I alluded to, Stop and Shop has been gracious enough to donate a thousand dollars for this wonderful event. So, number twenty-eight is Discussion of Vote on Whether to Accept Donation from Stop and Shop in the Amount of One Thousand Dollars for Support of Earth Day Event. I don't believe anybody will object, but if you do, let us know, we'll discuss it. Objections? Fantastic. That said, I'll entertain the motion to approve the thousand-dollar donation by Stop and Shop in the amount of One Thousand Dollars for the Support of Earth Day.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Selectmen Loops. Yeah, just kind of reiterate what, what Carlos said is that this is an awesome initiative. I'm very excited about it and, uh, big thanks to Stop and Shop and everyone who helped put this together. So, very excited about it.
And one other thing I will say that we didn't mention is there was some targeted areas based on suggestions, right? As to where it was gonna happen, obviously, we know when, but based on people's comments as to where they found that there was the most litter around for, uh, people to go out and pick up.
Right. So we have Mason Road and we have the flyer, but you're right, so, uh, select, um, select, it's Mason Road and Middleborough Road, Narrows Road along South Main Street to Ridge Hill Road, entrance to Pole Profile Rock along Slab Bridge Road, State Forest Entrance, and the other James White Library, uh, where they learn and recycle and protect the environment. So those are some of the suggestions that were, was put out there.
Yeah, and the library's joining in and they're having, um, some stuff there sponsoring Earth Day at the James White Library. And the money from Stop and Shop will go to buy the T-shirts that people will get, so, just so you know where the money is intended to go. And I think the T-shirts, if you show up, are free, I believe. And, um, so the, uh, and they designed those. I saw, uh, I saw a schematic today of the T-shirts and the proposed T-shirts. So I want to say that, that, um, really the building commissioner really, um, Carl took this on and he's really pushed it forward with everybody. So that's exciting, you know, to have somebody else who's really, you know, looking out for our town. And, and he's not from our town and I, and so I'm, I think that's awesome.
Yeah, that's great. And do we know where we, are we actually gonna bring the trash themselves? Have we, have we reached out to boards to take care of that?
No, it's gonna go to the transfer station. So, yep, and Vicki's on board. Um, every, every, like I said, Carl's done a good job of looping in, um, the departments that he needed to loop in and discussing it with all of the departments. So he's done a really good job of collaborating this effort.
All right. Well, I will definitely be out there. I can't think of anything else I've done on four twenty-two that will prevent that, so.
Yeah, it's only in the morning, right? So let's say we'll all go out and pick up some trash and, and it's a community thing too, a sense of community, so.
Absolutely.
It's a good time.
I think we all know it's needed, some areas.
Yes, some areas.
I see some people out there picking up trash, you know, and I'm, I'm always giving them a honking away. I think, you know, it'd be great to get a bunch of people out there to help out.
Awesome.
Okay, so next, it looks like we have some folks here related to the Conservation Commission purchase of the property. And that is Agenda Item-
Twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve, okay. So, um, let me just get down to where I need to be, sorry. I'm working with a relatively small screen here, so, um... It looks like this, I guess, so who do we have here to speak on this?
Victoria from our planning department, yep.
All right, great. Victoria, you wanna just give us a couple, you know, give us a little background on this?
She's coming.
All right.
She's all smiles, too.
Welcome, Victoria.
Okay. Okay, so hi, Victoria D'Antoni, Planning and Land Use Administrator for Town of Free Town. So, we were approached by, um, Margaret Wilkinson, the owner of the property. Her lawyer had reached out to the Conservation Commission to offer the parcel for its current assessed value, which is forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Um, I then re-reviewed the site, um, and it does border the Betsy Tabor, uh, Conservation Area in, in Free Town, and it also borders a conservation area in a cushnet. Um, it's six point one acres, it primarily consists of wetlands. And the Conservation Commission did vote to, uh, approve the purchase. We have a separate conservation, uh, land fund to pay for this, which currently has over a hundred thousand dollars in the account. So we would like to use some, uh, use that fund, uh, to pay for the purchase.
All right. Thank you very much. This seems like a good idea. I have no issues with it. Anyone else on the board have a problem or any questions or concerns?
No, and I, um, well, I believe it was on this that they had said that we don't, this doesn't need town vote, right?
No, it does not need-
Because of what it is, so we're good there, so us doing this will allow you to move forward with the purchase and get everything done, okay?
I have a question. Who prepares the deed and whatnot?
The lawyer, the, uh, owner's lawyer is gonna be preparing that. Um, we did, uh, review it today. Um, they're gonna be adding some language in, uh, just to reference, uh, the Master General Law section that allows us to purchase the property.
You should probably get that, run that by our town council.
Okay.
So get a copy to me or just, um, CC me on your request directly to town council.
Okay, okay.
And Debbie, is this probably a title search to make sure?
Yeah, I, I, I think we probably want to do a little bit of homework on it before we just accept it, yeah.
Yep. Okay. All right, so, um, should I include that in the vote, you think, or we'll just, you know, approve the Conservation Commission purchase?
You probably want to add the language like, um, uh, to approve it, uh, as long as town council, um, has no issues with it.
Okay, all right. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the Conservation Commission purchase of Zero Rear Keyin Road Map Two Forty-Five, Lot Sixty-Five, using the available funds of the Conservation Land Fund, pending council's approval of the transaction.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. Okay, is there anyone else there? I can't see it in the crowd, unfortunately.
That's a lot of, uh, I, I took Margaret French from Conservation, Lynn Fertado from Conservation and Open Space Committee, um, Jeff Amoraw from Open Space Committee, Lindy Fornier, are you on Open Spaces, Open Space Committee? And then Victoria and Steve Tripp is here as well. So that's one of the audience.
I think I can take care of, uh, Mr. Tripp, right?
You can. He, he usually stays for the meetings anyway, so I don't know-
He's a long caller.
I'm, I'm already there, so I'll do it right now. So I guess this is actually Jared.
No.
Agenda Item Twenty? Oh, sorry, uh, Carlos, my bad.
I'm sorry.
I'll be aye. All right, well, skip into Personnel Board, Agenda Item Twenty, Discussion of Vote on Whether to Approve the Appointment of Steve Tripp as Associate Member of the Planning Board effective February seventh, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Tripp is, I would say, our longest-tenured resident that comes, uh, to every meeting, I believe. Pretty cool, oh, currently, uh, currently, so I think his commitment to the town is unwavering. He wants to know what's going on. I think he'd be a great fit for the planning board.
Absolutely. Congratulations.
And, and the, yeah, congra-, absolutely, congratulations and, uh, some work ahead of you, but I think you got it.
Thank you.
So, with that said, I'd like to entertain the motion to approve the appointment of Steve Tripp as Associate Member of the Planning Board effective two seven, twenty twenty-three through six thirty, twenty twenty-five.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. Okay, all right, so now back to our regu-, regular scheduled items.
All right.
Great. Um, so Agenda Item Three is Executive Session Minutes from two six, twenty twenty-three. So that I'll entertain a motion to approve but not release the executive session minutes from two six, twenty twenty-three.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. Just for everyone's knowledge there, because I'm doing this remote, um, because I'm sick, you have to do a roll call for every vote. So if we don't, if we miss one, someone please yell out, remind us. Okay. So now we have the open session minutes from two six, twenty twenty-three and two seventeen, twenty twenty-three. With that, I entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from two six, twenty twenty-three and two seventeen, twenty twenty-three.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, uh, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. All right, now we have the procedures for the reserve fund transfers.
Margaret's coming up from, Margaret French is on the FinCom as well as, uh, Conservation Commission. All right, Margaret French, Chair of the FinCom. So, reserve fund tran-, a reserve fund is a finance committee budget. Um, so when any department requests money from, uh, transfer from the reserve fund, we're the ones that, it's, it's our money to transfer or not. So we were just presenting, you know, yes, you would like to know what's going on with the budgets and, and we're fully on board with that, but we don't feel the need that, that you need to actually vote on whether or not, because it's our money. So we're just talking about, yeah, I think that the reserve fund transfer procedures are that we get a request from department heads, then we have to bring it to the selectmen for approval, then it has to go to FinCom for approval, and the process can take four to six weeks. And sometimes we can't pay bills because we don't have that reserve fund transfer. So I think the, that, there's no pres-, there's no requirement that the selectmen, like by bylaw, a statute that says the, um, selectmen have to approve the reserve fund transfers. I think in the past, it's been, that they wanted to see them and that was what they wanted to institute. So I think the, the FinCom's position is, you know, the selectmen really don't need to approve it. They can just come to us. We have a budget. We're, I think last year was one seventy-five, the budget? So they can approve up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in reserve fund transfers. And I can tell you from experience, they vet them very well. They don't just hand them out.
I, I, and I'm relying, I'm relying on their opinion on this anyways, right? They're the ones that know it better than anybody, so I have no problem with, you know, taking out this middle layer that seems unnecessary to me. So that makes a lot of sense to me. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's no need for us to control something.
And, and we will still notify the selectmen. In other words, you will still get copies of them. So if there was something that you wanted to question, then you'd, you'd have that opportunity.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I trust the Finance Committee.
Do we need to do anything to change this procedure or simply just walk away from it? Because there's nothing that says that we have to do it, right? So we can just have it sent directly over to-
I think we just want to vote that, that the reserve funds, we, request reserve funds will go, um, directly to FinCom for approval and just copied to the selectmen. Does that make sense?
Hmm.
Yep. That makes sense to me. All right, so, um, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve the updated procedures as presented, um, for the reserve fund transfers.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret.
Margaret.
Okay, moving on, we have ambulance abatements, uh, write-offs and abatements. And January twenty twenty-three, so there were a hundred and twenty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. Um, yep, no questions or concerns on this? Anybody else?
No.
No.
All right, so with that, I entertain a motion to approve the ambulance write-offs and abatements for January twenty twenty-three in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, what, sorry, one hundred and twenty-one three, thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. Okay, now we have the COA Director of Senior Workoff Approved Candidates for twenty twenty-three. Looks like we have about, was it twelve candidates?
Ten.
Nine, ten.
Ten, tens candidates, sorry. Uh, I have no issues with this. Does anyone have any comment?
No.
No.
All right. Uh, I don't need to name them out individually, do I?
No, they're confidential.
Okay, perfect. That's even better. Uh, so I think I've asked that question every year I've done this, so it's good. Uh, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the list from the COA Director of Senior Workoff Approved Candidates for twenty twenty-three.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. All right, Agenda Item Eight is the, um, is whether to apply for the fiber grant for the municipal buildings. And this is related to, um, the police station and fire station really, right, needing fiber optics, uh, because of the extremely slow upload speed that the coax, current coax setup has.
So there's, um, yeah.
Sorry, go.
I'm sorry, Trevor, I didn't mean to.
No, you go, please go.
Um, this is actually two separate things. There's a, a fiber grant that would allow us to, um, connect all of the municipal buildings together. Police to fire to town hall, to the two towers, the communication towers that we're working on. Um, I, not that, I think the transfer station's out of the loop because it was too expensive to go up to the transfer station. Uh, the grant is for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, but here's the, here's why I wanted to ask permission to apply for the grant. We would own the fiber, we would own them. So if a tree fell and broke the line, we would be responsible to fix it. The benefit to owning the fiber lines and having this, the, 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 the buildings connected is we would only need one internet service and it would supply, uh, internet to all of the buildings. Currently, I can't tell you, I should, I'm sorry, I apologize, I should have looked at the Comcast bills, but they're painful to look at. I'm paying probably, or the town's paying like three hundred dollars for every, for each fire station, the transfer station, the town hall, uh, the police station is a whole another animal. It's, it's quite expensive. Uh, for internet. Uh, the COA has another internet, the Highway Barn has an internet, so we're paying three hundred, anywhere from three hundred to six hundred, to be honest with you, for internet service to each and every municipal building. By getting the fiber grant and connecting all the buildings by fiber, we would only have one internet service. And it, I, from what I'm telling, what they've been telling me is it would be super fast. Everybody would have super fast service. Um, I've asked them to include twenty-four strands of fiber instead of twelve, so that if in fact we ever did get, go to the point where we were, um, gonna supply fiber, say, to the residents, it would already be there. The strands would be available to do that. Um, that's not something as a town we, we want to entertain at this point because that means us managing fiber like Comcast manages cable, like that, we're not in the position to do that. Cause I was confused by that in the beginning. I'm like, well, why don't we just give it to all the residents? No, it's, it's, that's a whole different ballgame and I, I can tell you, we are not in the position to do that. But, so the kicker of this is that if, if something breaks, we would have to have somebody on contract to fix it. And so ultimately, there may be some maintenance costs down the line. I, so I didn't want to just sign up for it without making sure that the selectmen were on the same page and okay with it. Ultimately, I think we will save probably two thousand dollars a month in internet bills, though.
So-
Yeah, I think that base, I mean, that savings is going to absolutely pay for whatever, you know, potential repair fees I'm sure we run into down the line if that ever happens. You know, it, what I'd be interested in is there any kind of like insurance we can get on for, if there is something that breaks with it, you know?
Excuse me, I don't know, but we can check. I don't know, um, I don't, we haven't had public utilities in general.
And is there a certain amount of time we need to keep this for, right? So if it starts going away, like if it's something that we decide we don't want to have any longer, or there's something late, you know, newer, are we gonna be locked into a contract with, because we're bringing it in through a grant?
So we get-
To have it for so long?
The grant is for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I've gotten different estimates. It should pay for the contractor to run the fiber to all the buildings and we own it, so.
If we decide to turn it off, we turn it off.
Yeah, if you don't, it's just, it's like having the electric lines, but we would own them, so you, you don't have to use it. Um, I'm not looking to, um-
Not the wizard.
Originally, I wanted it to go into both business sections of town, meaning, um... So when you, when you look at like from a sonnet, from the town hall there and you're coming over here, right, the campus here, but in our, our last fire station, Fire Station Two on County Road, that's sort of where the businesses are, like Quick Pick. And a sonnet, if we took it up the hill, um, that's sort of where the businesses, I'm like, can we extend it there? But, uh, and the, the price was gonna be around, I think, five hundred thousand. So we would have to match the two fifty grant with opera money. I'm not sure that we're, want to do that. I don't know that we can sell it to the, the businesses, so I don't know that it would be beneficial. I have to do a little more homework. But the reality is we can do this piece of it now and connect the town buildings and I can continue to work on this. Um, the, the rest of it, because I think ultimately there's a section that we couldn't connect with fiber and we would have to lease fiber from somebody else. So there's, it's, it's, there's a lot to it. I just want to make sure the initial piece
Yeah.
won't be any money out of the town, but will ultimately save us money, but the risk is, uh, the repairs.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a step in the right direction and I think we'd be crazy to not try to at least, you know, get this grant and go forward with it. I mean, and then just having that option, like, if the town could have co-ops, or sorry, the town could have fiber, like, that could bring in a whole different kind of business too, right? Like, that's, a, a lot of towns, that's, a lot of companies I know, that's one of their requirements, right? Is that you have that kind of super high-speed internet. So I think that could be great. I personally would love to have-
Oh, I, me too. I, so, but like I said, when I-
Do we get to the Bay Shore somewhere?
Yeah, I started talking about that and then I, then I, I wasn't putting the piece in that we would have to run the-
Yeah.
Like, we would have to charge the residents and we would have to, oh my God, where are we? We'd have to have a whole department for that and-
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm sure there's companies that manage that for the town, right, on a, on a contractual basis. So, but like, that's something we could, we'll think about down the line. But just laying the groundwork, I think, is, is-
Right. And like I said.
Like, the, the infrastructure will be huge.
Right, and I size the, the infrastructure, the, the strands to do that down the line.
That's awesome. All right, great. Any other, any questions or concerns on this from the rest of the board?
Um, Steve Tripp has, Steve Tripp has a question through the board.
Yep, Steve, this trip?
So our, our, he's asking if there's gonna be a charge from the telephone poles? Um, our contract with the telephone poles and, and, um, I think it's Verizon that owns our poles? I think it's Verizon, but we did look at that and they, we, we have on there, we're allowed to put these on without a charge, but good question.
Yeah, very good question. All right, great. Okay, so with that, I will, um, entertain a motion to, uh, apply for the fiber grant for municipal buildings.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes.
Selectmen Matthews?
Yes. All right, now this is what I skipped ahead to. Uh, so Agenda Item Nine is the agreement between the Town of Free Town and Comcast for the fiber-delivered internet slash IMC fire integration. So this is what I was speaking of. You know, there's the current, currently, there's an issue that, right, the upload speed, um, for, is it really for the fire station?
Yeah.
To, to, you know, to upload any kind of documents they need to for, um, for payroll and things of that nature is extremely slow. And this is a limitation because of the coax internet cables that they have.
Yes. I know that there's an issue. I know TJ, um, Mr., uh, Ashley worked diligently with everybody. Um, this building is wired with fiber.
Yeah.
So we, I think the problem is uploading like from the fire station here, but they believe that this will fix that problem. If it doesn't, we may need to redo the fire station, but we're gonna try to just do it with this one, um, first. So I don't know a ton of it, although I'm, I apologize, there was a memo from, uh, Officer Ashley that I should have given to you, but I-
I, I read that. I read that.
I, I feel confident that they've done their homework. He did, he negotiated and I, I did, I did work with him on the negotiation of the contract. But, yeah, we definitely need this for the, the fire station integration.
Yeah, so one of the interesting parts of it was that, so it's a thirty, like, originally, we got a sixty-month quote. Um, and then we, but we, we can't, I said, town, we, we can't enter into a, a, a contract out long without getting a two-third majority at town meeting, which obviously, you know, that, the risk that it couldn't get approv-, it might not get approved and also, um, just, you know, that delays everything. So we ended up getting a thirty-six-month quote, which is a little bit more money. But now hearing about this grant, right, maybe we don't want to be locked into a long-term contract if there's a different approach that we can take where we're paying one internet fee for the whole town, rather than visually, so-
Yeah, so that was something, uh, Officer Ashley and I- And that was, yeah, so that was something uh, Officer Ashley and I spoke about too, it was like, hey, cause he didn't know what I was working on, so we, we've collaborated now and now they know that this is a piece that I'm working on. I had, I had talked to the chiefs, the fire chief and the police chief about the fiber. But I hadn't talked into um Officer Ashley, so.
Alright, yeah. And so pretty much what I'm seeing here is like the current um, bill, I think is around uh, twelve hundred dollars a month. And with the, using the coax and going to the super high speed fiber, it'll go up to like thirteen hundred dollars a month?
Yeah, I, I wanna say it's, I thought it was eleven hundred to twelve hundred, it's about a hundred dollars increase.
Yeah.
Literally a hundred and one dollars or increase.
Which seems very reasonable to me, you know?
It's, it's a nec- it's a necessity, so I, I don't even balk at it. I thought, like I said, I will, I, I think that we wanna give Officer Ashley some credit. He did negotiate them and really get them. Get them where they, get them a better price for all the town.
And it also looks like the, the build out and the construction cost required for this will all be covered by Comcast.
Yep.
Um, and that's like fifteen thousand dollars, so that's great. And then uh, yeah, so so that this, that's, that's makes sense. Um, I have no issues with this thing, it's the right thing to do. Any, any comments from the rest of the board or public?
No, no.
Okay, so without, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the Town of Freetown and Comcast for fiber delivered internet slash IMC fire integration.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Lopes.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. Okay, now we have the um agreement between Town of Freetown and uh, agreement Peterson GPI for the grant um funded pedestrian crossing on Memorial Drive between the Ta- uh, Freetown Elementary School and the Freetown Central Park. So, um, so I looked at this, one, one question I had was like, it looked like there's two different options of like where the crosswalk will be. Or is it two separate crosswalks?
That's my concern as well.
Really? I don't know why you guys are looking.
Well, the way you look, one of the drawings is, if you're looking at the parking lot, looking at the field, you gotta take a right to use the sidewalk that they're gonna build, cross the street to be behind the handicap uh, parking spaces at the baseball field parking lot. My only concern is from being at the field and, and watching games and tournaments, no one's taking a ride, they're just crossing the street from where the, the grass is, from grass to grass, so if you put it to the right, are we gonna get any use out of it?
Okay, so the reason why this was designed that way was because it's Mast D O T funded and I have to make it handicap accessible. So in order to do that, I put it down here so that they could safely cross over and get to the existing path that's behind that parking lot area. They really, if, if, if I if I put them in the middle of the parking lot, then they have to get from the middle of the parking lot, which is not asphalted and and this grant won't pay for it and then go down to the handicap area. So that was sort of, the goal was to make it a little more accessible if anybody happens to be um, you know, need a little, little more um, help with the ADA stuff, so. I just, I'll add, yeah, I'll add to that, that um, we got the safe route to, safe routes to school grant that is going to pay for a shared use path, the whole length of Memorial Drive now, the one point one million dollar grant. And that um, shared use path means people can ride their bikes on it, people can walk on it, so it's ten foot wide. So this is going to change in terms of the piece that goes to the right, will now be ten, ten foot wide. So that when we do the rest of the project, we don't have to rip out the six foot wide and put in ten foot wide. But the goal is to have the kids be able to safely ride their bikes, cross the street. Right now, there's nothing. There's gonna be beacons with, like a beacon where this is crossing. Um, and it, and the, the grant was for sixty one thousand dollars. They'll pay a portion of the engineering. I will be paying um, about two thousand dollars of the engineering out of the administration budget that I have for engine, you know, for this type of stuff for grants. Um, so this, you know, that's why, it was to make it ADA compatible so that we could get as much use out of it.
Sure.
Why, I agree with you. I mean, that's what I originally, I had slated it to be in the middle of the road, uh, but it didn't, it didn't work if you really wanted to be safe on the sidewalk, it didn't work that way.
Yeah, it's just a lot of, a lot of hills in that area, so this is I'm glad it's ten feet wide, cause you would have to deal with the hills on both sides from behind the park, the handicap spots and crossing the street on the other side next to the school. So ten feet, that should be more than enough to cover that. Alright, thanks. Thank you.
Alright, perfect. Alright, so with that, I will uh, entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the Town of Freetown and um, GPI for the grant funded pedestrian crossing on Memorial Drive between the Freetown Elementary School and the Freetown Central Park.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. Okay, Jenna, item eleven. This is uh, application from Hard Rocks uh, Racing to host the annual mixtape cycling event um, four sixteen, twenty twenty three. And this is an event that we've had in the past, um, I think it's, basically it's last year. I think they took a couple of years off for COVID. But um, I'm assuming the, does the chief have any issues with this? Do we know?
They signed off.
They've all signed off on it.
I know, I've on it, um, yeah. I support cycling, I support this. Does any, anyone have questions or concerns?
No, nope. It looks like a pretty um, good sized route that they're taking.
It looks very difficult.
I'll drive by and say hello.
But yeah, I know, it's all good.
Alright, awesome. Alright, great. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the application from Rock Hard Racing to host the annual mixtape uh, cycling event four sixteen, twenty twenty three.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes.
Yes.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes.
I think, I just wanna mention that maybe we should get this on the town web page or the town Facebook. Um, because it does disrupt traffic pretty significantly. And I know myself, when I know the bikes are coming, I change my route of things for that day because it's very difficult to get in and out of some places, so we might wanna let everybody know so they can be aware.
Yeah, for, yeah, I totally agree. That's a good idea. Um, okay, so next, we already took care of at Jenna I M twelve. Um, and then now we have Jenna I M thirteen, which is the um, makeup of the master plan committee. So I guess I'll just read this real quick. So this is the mission statement. Um. Mission to advise on the development of the master plan document, which reflects uh, and supports Freetown's priorities and goals. The master plan will examine issues critical to Freetown's future such, uh, Freetown's futures such as land use, zoning, housing, transportation, economic development, environmental protection, open space, recreation, cultural resources and infrastructure. And the makeup uh, will consist of seven members. One member from the planning board, one member from the conservation commission, or open space and recreational advisory committee. One member from the board of selectmen and one member from the public uh, safety. And uh, one, sorry, one member from public safety and three members from the general public. The action items, uh, work with the town, town officials and Southeast Regional Planning and Economic uh, Development District. Survey on the development of master pla- of the master plan, develop goals, objectives, action items, as well as review other materials. This will include reviewing feedback from surveys, public meetings and other outreach, and synthesizing the feedback into coherent, actionable strategies. I like it.
It's too bad Victoria left, cause she's, she's really taking the front role with this and she's doing a fabulous job.
Yeah, I think this is awesome, awesome thing for us to be doing. And um, this is great. Anyone have any questions or comments?
No, no, this is a, the way to, between the open space plan and this plan, it's putting our, we're moving forward with our town. This is amazing. I can't say enough things about both plans and especially the master plan. So, let's do it.
Yeah.
Alright, great.
I like steps forward.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that I will entertain a motion to uh, establish and approve the charging and makeup of the master plan uh, committee.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Lopes.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. Alright, so then, is this next one's um, related, right? This is just for.
Yes. So yeah, this is for the contract, so Serpent is our regional planning agency and the master plan, I believe, is around a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. And so we get a grant from the state for seventy five thousand dollars and the residual will be used, what's called DLTA monies, which is also like a grant from Serpent itself. So um, that even though you, you know, we're obviously contracting for their services, all of the services are being paid for by grant funds.
Perfect. Alright, great. So without all, um, I issued a motion to approve interim town administrator to sign Serpent master plan contract.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Lopes.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. Then item fifteen, this is for uh, Plymouth County mosquito control for the uh, to use Freetown airspace. And this was, will be between April twenty twenty three, October twenty twenty three. And, yep. I have no issues with this, I wanna get rid of mosquitoes if possible. I'm not, I'm not pro mosquito.
No.
No, it's all good, I appreciate it.
So I'll, I'll entertain a motion to grant permission to the Plymouth County mosquito control, but they use some Freetown airspace for aerial spraying um, project.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes, and related to that, so I'll entertain a motion to authorize the interim town administrator to sign letter authorizing Plymouth County mosquito control to use Freetown's airspace for aerial spraying project.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. Alright, now we have the town warrant. Right, am I missing something? I don't think so. Yeah, and so the only question we have is related to the Bristol Plymouth Regional Technical School for the debt exclusion. Right?
That's correct. And so, of course, again with BP, um, people have questioned the validity of the ballot question, which I swear to you not, is gone before town council four times. But I have put it again to him to say is this the wording correct to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish? He has not come, come back to me with a definitive, but again, this is not I ha- I, I, I have gone to them in the past to make sure the wording was correct. Um, so I will, if there's a, a concern about it, I will let you all know. Uh, I'm, I'm I'm confident that it's okay, but.
Yeah, and, and you know, I think one of our kind of strategies here is to try, you know, we, we, we all, I think as a board, we know and you know, as a town, we know that this needs, we need to pass this and we need to also join a vocational school district, so we want as many kind of cracks as is possible to get this through, right?
Do you want me to do any kind of like postcard or any kind of advertising or any kind of informational stuff? Um, I know it's the eleventh hour, but do you want to?
I know, I, I, I do, but um, I, I need, I need to think about that for a second. Cause I wanna make sure we get it right. I don't wanna confuse anybody, um. The other thing I'm concerned about, I, I know that like, you know, BP hasn't voted on it, you know, or, or the rest of the schools, right, we're, it's not like a hundred percent in yet.
Rehoboth has not voted and May Ford hasn't gotten approved, but it will, I'm confident that it will.
I know. And I just want as many cracks as is possible.
Right, if, if, if they don't, if we're not, if we don't get in the district the, th- this just goes away, right, we're not, it's not like we can borrow money.
I don't see, I don't see the harm in us putting this on here, like, how quickly, you know, could we get something out there that's uh, clear and also how, you know?
I don't wanna half.
It's not cheap to send out those postcards, but it's also, this is a very important thing.
It is, and you know, I, there is a thing about it, it not having a dollar figure. We could create a dollar figure, um, but it's a moving target for us too. It's based on the number of students, so it, it could be four hundred and fifty thousand one year, it could be seven hundred thousand the next. Um, the only other thing we could do is, you know, uh, come up with a figure, um of an annual amount, and if it's more than, you know, if it's more than that, we just have to take it out of the operational budget. Um, I have been looking through the budgets, obviously, it's budget season and I'm working on the budgets and one of the, the big things um, and I have to confirm with Patty, but that we have currently a debt exclusion for six hundred thousand dollars a year for one of the schools, probably the elementary school, that will be falling off um, in fiscal year, uh, tw- fiscal year twenty four will be the last year that we pay that. So ultimately, if, a- and, and because we're not in the district in fiscal year twenty four, we won't be paying a portion of the bond, but we will be in fiscal year twenty five and so it'll, it'll almost be a wash, right? One's gonna fall off, one could come on, taxes won't go up or down. Especially if we kept it around that six hundred thousand dollar figure. So that might be a way to ease the apprehension, you know, like, okay, um, if and if it's comes in, if our bond payment came in at seven hundred and fifty or eight hundred or nine hundred thousand, then we would just have to come up with that out of our operating budget. If it came in less, then clearly, you know, we would just reduce, we would reduce the taxes down, you know, but um, that's something while I was going through budgets, I realized, and I probably knew that when we were going to town meeting, but you know, revisiting all of these numbers and BP election stuff.
So I, I guess one of my things is, circling back to the cards, is if we do a card people are gonna want numbers, right? They're gonna say, well, what's it going to cost? We're asking for extra tax money, they wanna know what it's gonna cost them. Without being able to give someone a hard figure, it's gonna be hard, but at the same time, you do, you, you don't wanna try and have people think you're trying to pull a wool over their eyes, so.
What if we did something that we handed out at the, and I'd have to ask um, Cheryl if this is permissible?
Same thing, Debbie.
Like a handle.
Yeah. With a scale, right, kinda showing if it's this, it's this, if it's this, it's this, right?
Like we have for the town meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
Cause they, they're not gonna know what we're asking and why we're asking really. I wanna give them as much information so that they can make a decision, you know?
Right, being transparent as possible on this, it's, it's a big dollar amount and we have to make sure that everyone understands what's at stake.
Let's talk to Cheryl about that and then, you know.
Change so much.
Also, I think, I think it might make sense to, to, to potentially put out, you know, s- something.
We can put it up, we can do something that, the handout, and then we can put the handout on Facebook. The town, the town Facebook.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Push it all, all, eh, every way possible.
Yeah, website, Facebook, yeah.
Okay.
Whatever it takes.
Yeah.
Um, okay, I'll work on that.
Alright, so with that, I think that we're good with everything else, right? And I'll, I'll call a vote on this, so uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the April third, twenty twenty three annual town election warrant.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Lopes.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. Next is a engagement letter for audit services. This is nothing new, right? Just kind of next contract for our auditor.
Yes, this is the same firm we've been using.
Yeah. It's twenty twenty, twenty two thousand for twenty twenty three, this is, it might allow to say this, this is public information.
Oh, what we pay, yeah.
Yeah, uh, twenty two thousand five hundred, twenty twenty four and twenty three thousand in twenty twenty five. Goes up five hundred bucks each year. Seems pretty reasonable. Um. Alright, any questions or concerns?
No.
No.
Alright, great, so now I'll entertain a motion to approve the engagement letter for audit services from, um, Rosalini, Clark, and Associates.
Motion made.
Effective.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, effective, uh, for your resentings, six thirty twenty twenty three and six thirty twenty twenty five. For rooms.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Alright.
Right now, I'm gonna kick it over to Selectman Loops.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Personnel Board Agenda item number nineteen, accept the resignation of Donald B. Bullock as Constable, effective three one, twenty twenty three. Pretty straightforward, uh, any discussions?
No.
Alright, I entertain the motion to approve the, to accept the resignation of Donald B. Bullock as Constable, effective three one, twenty twenty three.
Motion made.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you, Mr. Bullock, for your service.
Of course.
Buen.
Buen.
Oh, sorry, Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Teamwork.
Yep.
Sleepover here.
Alright, we have already discussed Mr. Trip and item agenda number twenty, so we'll move on to item agenda number twenty one, the Personnel Board. Discussion of vote went to approve, to move forward with a flexible spending account plan. For those that don't know what that is, it, uh, spending account plan is a pre-tax portion you take out of your paycheck. Um, to cover out of pop expenses and healthcare, uh, dental, vision, things like that, it's, it's a good way to save money. And there is a rollover option of about a hu- six hundred and twelve dollars, or, or up to about thirty percent in your pay, if depending how your taxes are formatted. Um, this is a great idea, this is a good way to save some money for those that visit the doctor or have children and things like that, so. Any, any further discussion, questions, concerns?
Nope.
Alright.
Support that.
Absolutely, uh, I entertain the motion to, to move forward with a flexible spending account plan, uh, as discussed.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Item agenda twenty two, discussion of vote went to approve the mutual operating agreement or MOA between the town of Free Town and Public Employees Union, Local two seventy two, Lyona. Uh, I believe we have ample information that was provided in our packets, um, this just carries up a few things between us and the unions. Any discussion? Concerns?
No, I, actually, I, I don't think I saw this in the packet, I'm sorry, um.
This packet, this was part of the executive session.
Oh, yeah, sorry, nevermind, alright, we're good.
Facilities, okay, cause we have different ones, yeah. This was just the, the, the splitting of the facilities, maintenance duties.
Yeah.
Um, between the two personnel as opposed to one, and, um, bargaining with the union in order to get that done. So it used to be a non-union position, and now it's being split between two union employees.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Alright, any further discussion?
No.
Alright, uh, I entertain the motion to approve the MOA between the town of Free Town and Public Union, Public Employees Union, Local two seventy two, Lyona.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, item agenda number twenty three, discussion and vote to approve the combined collective bargaining agreement between the town of Free Town and Free Town Employees Associations. Public uni- employee unions, two seventy two of the Laborers International Union of North America, AFL dash CIO, effective seven one, twenty twenty one through six thirty, twenty twenty four.
This was just taking all of the MOAs or MOUs and putting them all in one document, and you owe Luann a great big thank you for typing that. Um, and then, so that when we're looking at contract or benefits or things that govern the union. W- we would have to look at the contract that was done, I think in two thousand and twelve, and consistently try to then take that and look at all the updates and changes over the last, uh, ten years. It's very confusing, very difficult to find the information and easy to make a mistake, so Luann, uh, worked. Really hard to get that all put in one document, they had to go between everybody and their brother and get it all, um, approved, and this is just signing off on that document, but there's no new. Information in there, it's not changing the essence of what was already in place with the union.
It's just a bit of housekeeping and making sure it's clear and concise and effective.
Organize it, clarify it.
Alright, I entertain the motion to approve the town of, well, let me go backwards here, and I entertain, I entertain the motion to approve the combined collective bargaining agreement. Between the town of Free Town and Free Town Employees Association, Public Employees Union, Local two seventy two. Of the Laborers International Union of North America, AFL dash CIO, effective seven one, twenty twenty one through six thirty, twenty twenty four.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes, that was a mouthful right there.
Yeah.
I wanted to start saying YMCA.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of acronyms there, alright, number item agenda twenty four, similar. It's a discussion of vote went to approve and sign the combined collective bargaining agreement between the town of Free Town. And Free Town Full Time Firefighters Association, effective seven twenty, seven one, twenty twenty one through six thirty, twenty twenty four.
This is the same thing, but this is the firefighters association.
Sorry. A little bit of housekeeping, a little cleaning up, and making everything nice and accessible.
Perfect.
Alright, I, I entertain the motion to approve and sign the combined collective bargaining agreement between the town of Free Town. And Free Town Full Time Firefighters Association, effective seven one, twenty twenty one through six thirty, twenty twenty four.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Item agenda number twenty five, discussion and vote went to approve the animal control officer's job description. This is similar to a lot of these today in the Personnel Board, uh, housekeeping, we're just, we had to define, we didn't really have a, a clear definition. Of duties and responsibilities of the animal control officer, as you know from previous discussions, uh, there's a new office at the, uh, transfer station. And this is just to better understand the roles and, and responsibilities of the ACO. Uh, again, a little bit of a housekeep, uh, housekeeping and, uh, making sure that it's transparent and accessible for all to see. Any additional questions, comments?
No.
Alright.
Looks good to me.
Pretty straightforward, uh, I entertain the, entertain the motion to approve the animal control officer's job description.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Selectman Loops?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Jared, I just realized you got, you got off easy tonight, huh?
I had a hot one.
Alright, and I think we took care of, uh, I'm sorry, took care of the board.
I just have.
Yeah, sorry, go.
That's it for me, right, the bottom, I just wanted to discuss, and there's no, no decision to be made, but, um. The bathrooms at the town hall are, are, um, obviously not handicap accessible. When I had the engineer at the town hall, working on feasibility studies, I had him take a look, and he, um. Presented a plan of how we could, um, take out a closet in the assessor's office. And maybe a wall where the bubbler is, if you recall when you walk in the town hall, and, and make, uh, new bathrooms that would be handicap accessible. The projected cost is around ninety thousand dollars, he said that's the high end, but don't forget we have asbestos in the floor there. Um, I just didn't know what your, the selectmen's thoughts were on this project. Um, I just, uh. I will tell you that I spoke to Carl, the building commissioner, and he's like, oh, why, why wouldn't we go out to the. Add on to the side of the building and put the bathrooms, that's a whole nother, a whole nother project and a lot more money, but I, I do feel like. I'm working on the budget, so every year I put in projects that I think we should do for the town buildings, and this one I didn't wanna just put in there, I wanted to ask if your, what your thoughts were. Because it, it's not an inexpensive project, but no, no matter what we do with that building. Long term, I mean, the bathrooms need to be updated, I don't know when the last time they were done, I'm, I'm guessing maybe nineteen forty four? I'm not, I'm serious, I think that's when they were, they were done, um.
Right, I guess my only question is, um, so you alluded to the asbestos, asbestos in the floor, would there be any other concerns with like lead? And then, I don't know if like any apps.
I would, I, I'd have to look, you know, I honestly didn't go down in the basement and take a look at what the pipes is, but I think we're in pretty good shape there, actually, for that stuff, um.
Just because of how drastically stuff, some, simple things like that can add to cost.
And I will do, I will do some more vetting, I guess, um, but I just wanted, I, I mean, if it's no, it's no, you know what I mean, we can just forget about it, but.
But it's, it's crazy that the bathrooms in our main public building aren't handicap accessible, like, that's ridiculous, you know?
They're, they're barely accessible for non-handicap people, alright, I'm gonna tell you that.
Like, like, and then, I'm, I've been to the other side of this, it's like, I'm nervous if we put a hole in the wall, then the whole building's gonna come down.
Ah, that building's well-built.
Is it?
You know, as a, as a person with disabilities, I, I'm all for handicap accessibility, but ninety thousand dollars, I'm just trying to.
Well, he's also saying that's a high end.
Yeah. Can we widen the door at a stall, some grab bars, I, I, I know it needs a refreshing.
Well, I think, the problem is, we don't have the room.
Five feet, five feet, uh, diameter to spin around.
Room, so we have to, can do it within those confines. Um, I, like I said, this is just a discussion, I, I can vet it some more, I can bring you guys some better information. It's, it's just one of those things, don't forget, the library doesn't have a bathroom, so we're also there coming over across the street using the bathroom. Sometimes the police stop in and use the bathroom on their routes at night, um. I, I think.
Can I put an ask in?
Can do it, and, and, uh, uh, it's definitely not, it's not a no for me, so I think that, you know, like, what I'm, what I'm, as soon as you started saying this, it's like, what if somebody applied for a job in the town? Who's very capable, but they're, they, they, you know, they're wheelchair bound or something, like, what do we do? You know?
We would probably have, we would be forced to do it immediately, right, as opposed to planning and a, and a, a thing, and that is so true, and I'm, and it's not even just. It's just some, you know, elderly people that have balance issues, it's difficult in those bathrooms, I'm not kidding you, it's difficult.
Well, my ask is, my ask is this, I know that the employees, I, I, I'm all for the bathroom, I, I, I believe that's a, a basic necessity for any town building, especially one. That's already built for the first floor with the, with the ramp and electronic doors. Anyway, we can ask Carl, cause I know the employees currently use the bathrooms to clean their dishes and everything else, which is unacceptable in so many levels.
We have no one else.
Is there a way, if we are putting in a little kitty corner for the bathroom, is there a way to also put in a sink somewhere? Possibly a microwave that doesn't catch on fire on the wall, for the employees.
I only did that once.
I know.
Keep holding it against me.
For the employees, so they don't go to the bathroom and wash the dishes, if we're gonna fix it, let's fix it, and there's not to be anything grand. But let's put a sink somewhere in that area so that you folks can have a little mini way to clean their dishes and not have to go to the bathroom every time.
I think the space would be, um, I mean, yeah, I can have them look into it, I think what, and I, and I also, you know, I have a little bit of a construction background, so I did look at them, like, I think we'd have to poke into the assessor's office a little bit more.
Lasts very nicely.
And then we might have to take the wall down between the map room and the assessor's office and sort of push him down. It can be done, and I think, and that's one, I will tell you, Carl's big issue is that they're, that, he did, he, he, he has a real issue with us washing our dishes in the bathroom. There is no other place.
Uh, if you do it, let's do it right, if we're gonna pu- put a, a, something like that together, I, I fully support, I think we all, uh, they're on the same page is yes. But if we're doing it, you know, at a sink somewhere, so that if we have to move the assessor down, that's a discussion for another time, but.
Utility sake, just like, uh, you know, so, I, I just, I can't even imagine where we do it, but I totally agree with, with Carlos, like, you know, that, it's ridiculous, people washing.
Yeah.
Especially if you've had a lot to eat and I have to wash your dishes afterwards, it's, uh, not very, that's not nice.
I'll work on that, I'll continue to work on it and see what I can come up with, um, but I do think it's something that we, again. I think I, and maybe Carlos, you know this date, or maybe Jared, I think ADA was passed in like nineteen ninety. I mean, we're, we're thirty-three years into it and.
Spent some momentum, but yeah.
Say we didn't know, it's new anymore, so I think it's really, we gotta start, we gotta really start putting.
Yeah, like, the, 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 I think that's a good point, mate, cause like, my, my, what I only think is like, alright, why are we putting any money to this building? When, like, really, it doesn't meet any of the criteria, like. You know, it can't fit, uh, it's, we've outgrown it in every way.
Oh, my God, so bad.
We're bursting out the seams.
Um, and, but at the same time, like, you know, if someday that becomes a museum or something else of that nature, it's, it's. Like, it's still gonna, gonna need to be ADA compliant as, as much as it can be, right?
Yeah, and if, if you were a local business, trying to open a business in town, you couldn't open without, with those bathrooms, they would require you to have their handicap bathrooms. Um, alright, so I'll keep working on that and bring it back to you guys, one last thing that's not on the agenda, but I wanted to mention it today, cause it was. Uh, incredible. With the, it was, uh, I think the excise taxes were due today. Uh, the parking situation was absolutely horrendous, we had people. Pulling in the parking lot, there was no parking spaces, so then they're trying to back out, but other people are trying to pull in behind them, they're beeping the horns, they can't get out, they were parking on. So now they're parking on both sides of the road, they're parking in front of the handicap ramp, so even if you were handicapped, you couldn't get in. Um, they were parking all over the place, all day long, I know we've, I've said it to you guys before. We've tried to, to mitigate it, but it's, it, it's bad, it's really, really bad, and I have, I don't even know how many employees we have now. We have, I've, two days this week I've come to work and not had a place to park, um. It's bad, I don't know, I, I will continue to work on a solution, um, but I don't know that there is one.
You know, how about a rideshare van using one of our vans from the COA to pick up all the employees in town and.
I mean, that might be what we have to do, it's, so I just wanna give you that, you might be getting phone calls about people who, who had some issues, I have. And I saw one lady, she just went in the parking lot, jumped out of a car, ran to the box, threw her taxes in, I guess, I would assume the box outside, and then jumped back into her car. There's no place to park, so they're just leaving their cars running in there, it's, it's just not, it's not conducive to business, it's horrendous, and I, it's. It's bad for the residents, and it's not safe, and it's just, it's just, I don't have a solution, I would.
Just for the record, Deb.
I mean, we, we have a solution, unfortunately, the town didn't support our solution.
Right.
You know, like, you having the annex at, at the bank would have mitigated all this if we could, you know, put the assessor over there.
Yeah.
No, things that we can do, I believe excise can be paid online, correct?
I think, yes, all the taxes can be paid online, but you know, people, some people don't wanna do that, some people still pay us with cash.
Sure.
Um, we have a lot of cash that comes in, you know, um.
Maybe better, better awareness of that and pu- push it out a little bit more, and then we put it on, uh, the annual letter that we send out and everything else.
We could put it on Facebook from now on, like, hey, right before taxes are due, you could pay, I, I will tell you, I've paid mine online, but there's a fee involved. So the excise tax is not terrible, but my real estate tax, the fee is too high, I'm not doing that, of course, I work in the town hall, so that's not a big thing. But I remember before I wanted to pay my real estate taxes online, and the fee was like seventy-five dollars, I mean, it was, to me, it wasn't, I'm not doing that, I'm not paying seventy-five dollars just to use your online service.
Was that because we charged the fee, or was that the third party?
It must be the third party that does it, yeah.
If it's percentage based rather than a flat fee, right?
Yeah, it is, the more, the bigger your bill, the more you have to pay to, to use the service, so.
Maybe we need to look into a different.
I think we can look into that and see how we can change that, that's just absurd.
I can have Patty look at that.
That's ridiculous. It's, it, it doesn't, it doesn't cost that many more money to process a, a ten thousand dollar bill than it does a two hundred dollar bill.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, like.
Well, when you, you, credit cards are, credit cards are fee-based, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're paying your, it, it increases with fees, so, certain fees are fixed, but some aren't, so. But regardless, that's still, that's insane, how do you tell a resident, you're gonna charge them seventy-five dollars to not come to the town hall, especially if they drove to town hall, they couldn't find a place to park. So they said, well, I'm gonna go online and pay, and then they thought it was gonna be seventy-five bucks.
Absolutely, someone told me seventy-five dollars or, uh, play in traffic for two seconds, I'm gonna go play in traffic for two seconds and save my seventy-five dollars. We pay enough in taxes, uh, as it is, to add enough, a feat of that, I think there's a better way of doing it, we just need to look a little deeper for next year.
I just wanted to give you guys the heads up, you might get complaints from residents about today's tobacco.
Alright.
Yep, understand that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's it, that's all I got.
Alright, alright, great, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do signatures?
Yeah.
Signatures, we gotta do.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Trevor, you can hang out with us for a couple more minutes. You can put us on mute.
I might take a nap.
Yeah.
What is that big blue signature? Oh, my gosh, did he sign it with crayon?
I'm, I'm kinda jealous, I kinda like it, you know, it's, uh, I wanna do that too. There it is, this is mine, it's not as cute. Mix, I like the name of it, mixtape. I'm gonna be silent, so you gotta hang this on your wall, correct?
There's that signature again.
That's like crazy, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm, it looks like he signed it like a.
He gets a big pen, we want a big pen too.
I can't see anything.
No, I was talking to the audience.
This is the.
Crazy.
The conform purchase, there's three pages, all the same.
Okay, so.
Pen? You got a blue pen?
Does it have to be blue?
Yeah.
Mine's blue.
Yeah, I think this is blue.
Alright.
Mine's black.
Oh, shit, that's black. Is it red?
Too late.
That was great.
We'll do a quick edit.
I put a tiny little, I put a tiny little line in it, looked blue.
Just go with Maxi, some color blind, they all look the same to me.
You can't make that stuff up.
Grazie, they're all for you.
Okay, Trevor.
Alright, all set?
Yep.
Yep.
Alright, with that, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Lopes?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes, alright, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.